Super. Good.
Okay, Mary.
Great. So we'll make a wee start. And colleagues, thank you very much for joining us. We're really delighted that you're coming along to what is our fifth in early years STEM network session. And as Lynne said, we have held four of them so far and we'll be happy to share the recordings with you. Please don't worry about kind of taking loads of notes and worrying about the links because we will share the PowerPoint with you. Hopefully tomorrow if we can get the link to the recording as well. So just a wee heads up, the session is being recorded. And you will get a link to that. So we had the fourth session just a couple of weeks ago and we had colleagues from the Improving Gender Balance and inequalities team sharing with us just about how gender impacts inequalities more broadly in the early years and some sort of useful hints and tips from research, but also some practical ideas too. So if you haven't seen that one, it's really worthwhile watching with. And after the last session, feedback from the evaluation said that people were really keen to hear from practitioners. They really loved the kind of research angle. And they were really happy with the kind of sessions and just keen to engage and to share practice and hear from other settings too. So building on that theme, we'll continue with that this evening. And share some links and tips and suggestions with you and really keen to hear from you too. And so we're hoping that you'll engage with that interactive element. This evening, as you know, we're going to be thinking around sort of STEM outdoors and the opportunities that STEM affords us. And it's so rich and so many. And we've got lots of kind of suggestions and resources for you. And then we're really keen to hear, again, we've had five of these sessions, we're really keen to think about what might be your thoughts for after the summer. So without that, we'll look again at the opportunities that we have through realising the ambition. So Lorraine is really helpfully colleague in the background. Is moving the slides on for doing all the kind of links in the chat. So we're really, really grateful to that. And I realise, having said that, having gone through all the kind of preamble in the chat there, we haven't even said hello. So Lynne, would you like to kick us off and say hello?
Yes, I would. My name's Lynne Yeneka. I cover the South East region. And I noticed quite a few people signed up from the South East today, so I'm delighted to see that. And my background is primary, so I'm primary and early years. So Mary and I are delighted to be able to present these early years sessions to you and we hope to follow them up with some primary sessions as well. Mary?
Lorraine, just realised, do you want to pop in and say hello too?
Yeah. Hi folks. My name's Lorraine Ross, Education Officer STEM for the South West, covering the three areas and Dunfermline and Galway. And my background is secondary, secondary drama specialist, but I've been very fortunate enough to work in another role where I was able to work across all sectors.
Thanks, Lorraine. And we've got Katrina on the call too. Katrina?
Hi, thanks, Mary. So I'm Katrina Gill and I'm Education Officer for Early Years and I'm based in the South East team as well.
Thanks, Katrina. And apologies for that, colleagues. My name's Mary Thompson and I'm a STEM Education Officer working within Fourth Alley, West Lothian. And if you haven't been along to a session before, between us, we've kind of coordinated the session and really delighted to share our practice and our knowledge and for you to share that with us too, just to build that kind of STEM network. And the ambition is that we'll have kind of regional networks, we'll have local networks and we'll have national networks too. So we wanted, just as we were thinking around STEM, we thought it worthwhile mentioning kind of realising the ambition. We've got so much wonderful guidance within realising the ambition from the interactions, from the experiences and from the spaces aspect too. And as we were thinking about staying and thinking about staying outdoors, it's just absolutely woven through realising the ambition, the use of the outdoors, how it touches on the children's young wellbeing, how it kind of supports their movement and coordination development and really how it promotes their confidence, creativity and curiosity. And we were trying, as Lynne and I were preparing, we're thinking about which aspects do we pick out for it? And actually, it's woven through every single aspect of the document and we were really excited and really encouraged about that. And we wanted to just kind of explore that with you for a wee moment and ask you if Lorraine can pop onto the next slide for us. Having kind of looked at realising the ambition, maybe even just invite you to come in, to post into the chat. How do you feel about realising the ambition and how that positions the outdoors? So if can invite you to share your thoughts in the chat pane or to come on camera or come on mic. And to say that we'd be really, really keen to hear what you're feeling about the place that it's given within realising the ambition. And a further question is, as you can see on the screen here, is thinking about an example of STEM learning that you've engaged in outdoors with your learners.
But he's been very shy today, Mary. I'm taking Ian started the recording. I can't actually see if he has.
I'm presuming so. So Lynne, thinking about kind of realising the ambition and the positioning of STEM and outdoors, what are our thoughts? What are your thoughts around about that?
I just love it when you put me on the spot. I just love it. Do you know, I just, as I, there, Marianne's just put in exactly what I was going to say. Without a doubt, for me, outdoors is the best place for learning, especially for wee people. Because they just want to be out there, they just want to be in amongst everything out there and be getting involved in it. So and STEM, just as we will hopefully will see as we go through today, STEM just lends itself perfectly for outdoor learning. And yeah, realising the ambition gives it its place as well, which is great. You know, we put up a couple of key statements there about wellbeing, movement, coordination, confidence. And without a doubt, it is, yeah, Marianne, you're absolutely right. It is about managing that risk. I was very fortunate, we had a nursery that joined the primary school where I worked and I was always jealous because they were always out when we were in. And it just is fabulous. Mary?
Yeah, I think that's right. We didn't, you know, when we think about some of the barriers that we can have between the kind of indoors and outdoors, particularly kind of further up the school, that just doesn't exist within early learning and childcare in the early years, because actually children just naturally gravitate to the outdoors. And there's no, there's no kind of separation in the learning space. It's just all part of that kind of environment too. And we're just saying, I've kind of seen some comments coming through from Sarah, completely agree, inside resources, outdoors and unlock the potential. And children being very engaged outside. I think that's what we see. We've seen that through and through in kind of practice, our own practice, in practice of establishments that we've been really fortunate enough to visit and to engage with. And that's what we were hoping to kind of explore with you this evening. And Katrina, do you want to come in there? See, you've come on camera. Thanks.
I was just going to come in because I think, you know, when you're thinking about realising the ambition, I think it really asks us to look at indoors and outdoors as equal and outdoors is not an add-on, which, you know, 10 years ago, it really was an add-on and, you know, people would go outside for half an hour or an hour. Whereas really now, we want to be looking at that outdoor environment and the indoor environment as being equal, as being as rich in possibilities and opportunities. And particularly outdoors, not just trying to replicate what's inside, but to really think about the outdoors and what it can offer. And particularly in terms of STEM, it's such a rich learning environment. But it's not about just copying what you've got indoors and bringing that outside. It's about a different way of looking at what outside can offer.
Yeah, I think that's absolutely right. And I think Heather's just popped in through the chat that children love it. Sometimes it's the parents that worry about the rain and so on. And actually noticeably, the difference is that the children, when they're outside, they use more language and their development and confidence can really, really grow because they're in a kind of natural state. And I kind of noticed a wee comment there about children are self-regulating better outside and that opens up learning opportunities that they maybe wouldn't engage in, kind of outdoors. And really nice to see a couple of comments coming in there about den building has been fab and planting etc. Just the opportunities that offers in the natural state in the garden. Really nice to see all kind of range of things being grown too. And Claire says they are just the same. It's not about bringing the indoors out, it's about doing something different as well. Okay. And last wee comment, I think from Paul, as someone said, it's about woven throughout the document. And we do lots of loose parts building, so it features levers and seesaws made by children in construction. And that the children there in Paul's establishment self-evaluate risk and the risk supported by an adult. Yeah, I think that's, I think that's really lovely, about the children being very much part of that kind of risk assessment and risk benefit process, that they're doing it naturally for themselves.
It's interesting, Paul, that you also mentioned that it's still a process with your colleagues. And I think, I think that is where, you know, there is still that process with practitioners to get more involved in it. And I think once, we were really privileged last week to be part of an early years outdoor webinar. And there was a girl on that who was telling about all the things that she's been doing. And she admitted that before actually being involved in early years and doing all these outdoor things with the children, she wasn't an outdoor person, but she now is, which was just such a nice thing to hear that it's actually changed her whole view of what it's like to be outdoors. So that was really good. Lots of fabulous comments in the chat. I would love to read them all, but I'm feeling we maybe need to move on because we have got quite a lot of slides to get through. And I did promise a six o'clock finish. But the chat's there, by all means, read it while we're going along yourselves. But some really positive statements going on there. And yeah, just everything we've said and it does fit so well with building the ambition. So just moving on, I don't know, and again, you can pop in the chat. Obviously, our e-School education side of things has been, has taken off hugely during the pandemic with this need for online learning. And one of the things that has come out of that is especially Doug on e-School, who's particularly for early years. And I'd just like to, you can pop in the chat, have you been engaging with that online? He now has his own Twitter account as well. And I know he's also done his rounds of going around various nurseries. Have you been privileged enough to have him in your nursery? Have you asked for him to come to your nursery? Oh, I like that. Heather's just popped in a wee link to a group called Wiggles that she's happy for people to join in about outdoors. And what I will say about Doug as well is Doug kind of started as a ThingLink on e-School for early years and has kind of grown arms and legs from that. As I say now, has his own Twitter account is now actually embodied as Doug. He started off as a drawing, he now has his own body and his own outdoor gear. And he regularly pops up on e-School for early years. And they created a ThingLink round him, which, you know, the children can click on and go into and just around that, have people, have people engaged with ThingLink at all? Lorraine's just taking us in that. So if you click on one of the links in ThingLink, it brings you up something to do. And the good thing about it for early years is this little blue button. And where if you click on that, it actually tells you what's going to happen there and it takes you to the next link. So there's been ones, this has gone on for the last year with Doug. And just lots of different ThingLinks for him to go to. And that one was in Middle Lothian. I don't know if we'll get anybody in Middle Lothian on the line. It is absolutely fabulous. I can't recommend it highly enough. And from that, we actually got involved in that and they came to us and asked us to create some STEM ThingLinks. So we, this one that's on your screen just now is actually the first level space, first level learning space. And we created ones for first level and for second level. And what they do is they embed them in the picture. So in that ThingLink there, I don't know if you saw, just in the corner by the door was the map. And you click on the map and it brings up this STEM ThingLink. And that particular one was about sustainability and we created those for both first level and second level. What we've actually done, and it isn't, you're getting a preview of it because it isn't actually live yet, is we've actually created one for the summer, which is on the next slide. And this is one that we've created just by the seaside and it's a STEM ThingLink. And you'll notice in there, there's numbers, ones and twos, and that's for first level and second level. But the ones that don't have numbers are actually, they could be for anybody. They could, you know, they could be adapted for early level, you know, it's things like building sandcastles, ball games. You know, just various STEM things, even in the corner there, we've got ones about butterflies and we created an early level and a first level and a second level link for those. The ThingLinks are fabulous. And actually, again, I would ask, have you been using ThingLinks? Have you used them in your own setting? Would you think that a ThingLink session would be a thing that you would be interested in creating your own ThingLinks to put online? They are such good fun. Mary and I have created a whole lot of STEM ones and we've had such good fun creating them. And the great thing about them is we find that teachers use them. And we also find that the children use them directly themselves. So they've been a really good thing to have during this pandemic because it's kind of self-directed learning, but at the same time, the teachers have maybe used them as a theme to build lessons around as well. So yeah, Miss Cairns, you're saying you would quite like a ThingLink session. We did wonder about that because actually you get absolutely tied up doing it. It's just such good fun. You just, once you start, you don't want to stop. So has anybody else used ThingLinks at all? Just by all means unmute yourself if you just want to speak rather than type. Okay, but if you agree with Miss Cairns and you think a ThingLink session would be good, by all means, just give her the thumbs up. And then we can maybe think about doing that. That's maybe one of the things for after the summer. Okay, can we move on? So what we did after that was we looked at the different aspects of STEM. So this is the first one and it's science and we looked for fun science activities and outdoor science activities. And these are kind of linked to our wakelets that we talked about in our very first session. But more specifically, summer and outdoor science links, and there are thousands of them out there. So these are just a couple of ones that I found that I found quite useful and things that you might be able to use that you would find lying around the nursery or in the house. So very much conscious of trying not to actually create more expense for you. But dead easy ones. Somebody's just put in about the ThingLink, Edinburgh has no licence for ThingLink yet. So yeah, there is, there is about creating your own ones. There is, you do need to, yeah, you do need to pay to make them public. But I think you can share within your own school, you can create your own account and you can share with some people. But we'll cover that, we'll cover that in a ThingLink session. We just originally registered for a free account and Mary and I share ours with each other. So you can share them with other people, but actually making them public property, that's what you need to pay for. There's Katrina put up a statement that Edinburgh doesn't have a data impact assessment for it yet. Okay, so we'll look into that and hopefully we'll have a bit, yeah. ThingLink, if you just go in, Liz, if you just go into ThingLink, just type in ThingLink, it'll bring you up and you can set up your own your own account in there and create your own one, which you could share with the children yourself. But we'll look into that and we'll definitely, we'll come back to you after the summer and hopefully develop a session around ThingLink. And we will look into the barriers that there may be there. So as I say, we're not going to share all these links in the chat with you because you will be getting the slides and you will see this. Mary, I'm going to hand back to you for this one because this is one of your outdoor webinars that you handled with the digital learning.
Thanks, Lynne. Yes. We've popped the recording there in the bottom of the slide. And this is rather than us kind of duplicating, we're thinking about kind of staying outdoors, there's just so many rich opportunities that you can take from a mobile device, a tablet and how you can use them outdoors. And a colleague, Susan C, explained this beautifully in terms of opportunity. So it could be like capturing the sound of birds, it could be a slow-mo video of splashing in puddles. It could be looking at kind of identifying plants or animals that are outside and how you can use the magnifier tool to kind of zoom in to those. And there's kind of lots of different really possibilities. Or indeed kind of creating content and following QR code trails outside. So rather than us kind of capture the essence of that right now, we thought we'd give you the link, but just see there's loads of possibilities. And we're really keen in the chat as we go through for you to kind of pop in some examples of how you might use technologies and digital technologies, particularly outdoors too. So popping on to the next slide, we have here a kind of, Lynne and Eva and myself have been connecting around some of the digital demo sessions. And there's an actual fact, another one tomorrow, tomorrow evening, isn't it right, Lynne? Round about seven o'clock, round about how we use computing science. Yeah. So computing science, and we can kind of pop that link into the chat if that'd be helpful. But there's lots of really helpful information around about technologies, the use of loose parts, indeed kind of the play toolkit and how that just incorporates loose parts into the kind of natural environment and the opportunities and possibilities that children can use them, can create with them. And just the fun and the joy that they can have and how they can take learning forward. So if you've kind of got thoughts around that, they would be really keen to hear how you do that too. So Lynne, passing back to you for our engineering aspect.
Sure. So again, and I know this is one of the areas that we all struggle to find things that we feel we can do with our children around engineering. So again, a couple of links there, Lorraine's put the one in that I found. And it was simple things. I heard somebody talking earlier on about, you know, den building, that's your engineering. And this particular site, Little Bins for Little Hands gave building stick forts, which was great. And a stick teepee. And also this one I quite liked as well, there's a small picture of it, creating hex bug mazes and structures. And they just got these horrible, these horrible creatures, which children just love, these little kind of grace sliders. And they built tunnels and things for them to go through and mazes for them to follow around. And you know, even you see there, there's paper tubes for them to go around. All engineering, all can be done, you know, maybe a rainy day activity, maybe you could build the maze outdoors using blocks. I was very fortunate, just by chance yesterday, to be in a meeting with the Royal Academy of Engineers. And they were talking about engaging with schools. Now, at the moment, they do engage with primary and secondaries. And I have put the link on there for them. But they are talking about trying to bridge down into early years. And the reason I put the link on there is I still feel it might be useful for people looking for engineering to join the networks. And there are networks around the country for this. So the link's there to join the network and there's also this connecting with STEM teachers as well. So they're on there and they are, as I say, I was speaking to Ian Goddard and he was telling me that he's looking to develop it down to early years. But what he was saying was that they're hopefully going to do some sessions just after the summer. So you might want to sign up for that so you get notification of these sessions that are going to happen straight after the summer. And they're kind of just re-running innovation sessions that they've done in the past. And you might find them quite interesting. I'm just noticing Heather's put in Starcatchers do a podcast showing you ideas how to use camera iPods for taking pictures, listening to music or record what you hear outside and listen and talk about it. Absolutely fabulous. As I say, our digital team have put a number of recorded webinars on their site as well, on Did You Learn about, around about these things as well. And the great thing about it is you can, you know, anybody, somebody as digitally challenged as me can follow these. So definitely up there for anybody. And Sarah's agreeing, love Starcatchers. That's one we'll have to take a note of, Mary, and have a wee look at. Okay, Mary, I'll hand back to you for the next slide.
Thanks, Lynne. Yeah, so again, thinking about covering the aspects of STEM, thinking about kind of numeracy and maths. And colleagues in numeracy and maths team have helpfully already, you know, kind of done a session across the spectrum. Thinking about numeracy and maths and possibilities for taking outdoors. So you'll see on the next, this slide and on the next slide, just some simple examples of ways that, again, it's not exhaustive, it's just some ideas of how you can take early level numeracy and maths and outside from hunting, for items, for looking for symmetry, for finding the number, for thinking around time, about the day, how the sun journeys through the day and noticing the kind of differences around that. From like using chalk to draw in 2D shapes. So rather than, again, we just wanted to offer you a flavour of that tonight. And then you'll get the slides and you can kind of look into these a little bit further or indeed add to them. And we'd love to hear from more ideas that you have and how you use numeracy and maths in the early learning and childcare and early year settings. And we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be doing an early, kind of early learning and childcare early level session if we didn't mention A Creative Start and the work of Julia Robertson. And this is a book I personally really like. I found it really, really helpful, Messy Maths. And again, you don't have to necessarily buy the book, but you can certainly go on to Juliet's website and take advantage of lots of the great ideas that she posts up freely and that people connect with and share lots of kind of practical tips. And I'm noticing that Claire's saying it's the Messy Maths course is great if anyone can get a chance to kind of engage with that too. But lots of free ideas there should you wish to engage with at another time. This is another book that's a favourite too, which is called Plays the Way. And lots of local authorities have been engaging with, lots of kind of early level pedagogues and so on. And these two kind of pictures just kind of spoke to us about, you know, an example of a child pretending to be a dog. And all the kind of aspects from numeracy and maths that can come from that, from the tallest and shortest to kind of tally marks, agility courses, the weight and the capacity. So lots of ideas and how you would just take that idea as a web and then the ideas from numeracy and maths can come from that. Or something slightly different, the book's got an example of a wheelbarrow. And all of the kind of questions that you can explore and learners might want to kind of create their own their own possibilities, their own questions, from patterns to length to tall, how much it can weigh. And again, just other possibilities for you to think around STEM outdoors and also kind of linking in the kind of numeracy and maths aspect from there. So passing back to you, Lynne.
I just muted myself instead of unmuted myself. We also, I also thought I'll look for sort of more environmental STEM. And really what the sort of things I was really thinking about was around recycling, reusing, not having to buy stuff in. So again, these are links that you'll get sent to you. Recycling stuff, you know, using waste again, gardening, growing things from scraps. We actually did this in our household last year and actually regrew a whole lot of vegetables from from the leftover vegetables that we'd had and very, very successfully, dead easy to do. Making resources from stuff that you'll find around the home, using junk material to make models. Building a mini wormery, again, dead easy to do. You just need a plastic box and you can do that. A bug hotel, which you'll all have heard of, but again, can be made from recycled materials, doesn't need to, doesn't need to be anything bought. And I know these things cost money, but I actually looked at them and sponsoring a tree or an animal is actually not a huge expense and it might be something, you know, you're talking a couple of pounds here. It might be something that you would want to do as a nursery and, you know, just to spark that interest with the children. And the planting a tree is literally buttons and the adopting an animal, I think, is under five pounds. So it's something you might want to think about if you've got a little bit of space in your budget that the children can engage with. Thank you, Lorraine. This next slide just calls up all the science centres. Now, we do work very closely with science centres and the science centres are part of the STEM strategy. So I did think it was worth flagging them up. Now, I know with a lot of them, there is a cost implication. However, your local science centre, wherever you are situated, often offer bursaries for people to come to the science centre or offer to cover travelling expenses. So it's worth thinking about that if you are a nursery or an early years centre that would quite like to visit one of these places. I did put up that both Dundee and Glasgow are hoping to open up at the end of June. That may well have changed with the recent announcement today. I'm not quite sure about that. But the one I really wanted to flag up to you was Aberdeen Science Centre. And they actually were one of our grantees before and they actually have a STEM learning programme. And in that, there is specifically a section for early years. So we'll put that link in there for you and you can go straight to the section for early years. And they also, inside the science centre, they have an under six zone. And I do know that Glasgow Science Centre is more of a kind of play zone that they have for the under fives as well. But Aberdeen Science Centre do seem to have specialised quite a bit in doing some early year stuff. I wondered if anybody had any comments to make on any of the science centres or anything they wanted to share. Perhaps if you had managed to get a bursary or you, I know the Glasgow Science Centre did use to offer subsidies to Glasgow schools because the council had signed up for it. And I know in Edinburgh, there was a similar thing going with Dynamic Earth. Obviously, with the pandemic, that's not perhaps been happening. But that's not to say it won't happen again in the near future and hopefully after the summer, we might get the chance to visit these places again. I just wondered if anybody, if anybody has any experiences of any of the science centres. And Dynamic Earth is a science centre, although it has the name of Dynamic Earth. But if you've got anything you want to contribute on that or share with people about your experience of the science centres or indeed using the resources that they have developed, then we'd be happy to hear about that too. By all means, pop anything in the chat. And Mary, I think it's back to you for the next slide.
Great. Thanks, Lynne. So we wanted to just bring to your attention, if you haven't seen it too. And we're conscious that we are sharing lots with you, but we hope that'll be helpful kind of beyond the session this evening and that you can kind of dip into all of these resources. But there's some fantastic work from Spine Scotland, particularly the Thrive Outdoors aspect of that. Where throughout kind of lockdown, they have sort of Friday fun aspect. You can see that on the, on the screen there. And there's some examples and also practitioner guides as well. There's a whole host of these and these are really great and worth engaging with. And also they're connecting with practitioners within schools and also writing, they're writing some of these aspects for Thrive Outdoors too. And further to that, on the right-hand side of the screen, you'll see that out to play guidance. And that's really helpful, practical guidance for creating those outdoor experiences. Again, it's relevant, it's really helpful. And if you are just starting out or you're kind of newly qualified or you haven't explored this aspect before, then please feel free to kind of look at that and hopefully that will help and guide you in connection with what In, in connection with what your setting is already doing. I'm kind of noticing some comments coming in there Lynne, just in reflection.
Yep.
About the, the science centres aspect, people saying that they've been to Dynamic Earth and loved it or the Aberdeen one with the rainbows. And also the, uh, science festivals being online this year. So people already engaging with that. We love to hear that and we hope that. Um, that yourselves and the learners that you're working with really benefit from that. That's a part of the ambition of this STEM strategy. Lorraine, are you able to put, thank you. Oh, already on it, that's super. So we wanted to mention, um, VET to you as an example because they have, um, an early years resource box. That you can actually engage with. And if you haven't seen it. Um, they are, they're kind of, obviously they've got early level, second level, first, uh, first level and so on, but really nice, uh, resources. That are available across science, maths and technology. They also have health and wellbeing and, and social studies too, but for the purposes of this evening, we've just kind of flagging up to you the. The science, maths and technology aspects. And you can click on those links and they can give you some resources and some suggestions that your learners might be interested in. And if you have still got date, uh, uh, time in your diary or indeed capacity to engage. There is also a webinar happening tomorrow, um, round about, uh, Let's Get Outdoors. So if you're looking for some more learning. And you, there's probably still time to register. And Lynne's, uh, Lorraine's popped the link in, should you wish to, to do that and you've got time to do that tomorrow.
Yeah. And the good thing about that one is they are providing, um, resources as well. If you sign up, you're, you're going to get resources from them too, which is fabulous.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks Lynne. So we thought, we, there's been a fair amount of talking, uh, from us so far. And we thought we'd be really keen just to, to reflect with you and happy to have comments again. And more for you to come into the chat. What sort of resources? We've shared a sort of tip of the iceberg with you this evening, although possibly it feels a bit like an avalanche. Um, what resources ha- have you used or, or would you recommend to colleagues? Again, some of that could be digital, it could be places to go. It could be thinking about the high street, um, or forests or parks. So just a kind of wee pause for a moment to see. What resources or, or places for, for outdoor learning or for STEM? Uh, would you recommend to colleagues? Cause I'm sure we always love a recommended.
Absolutely. And it, and if you want to put your hand up, we'll call you in to, to speak if, to save you all typing frantically. By all means, just use the hand up function and we'll call people in, in an orderly fashion. I see Katrina's put the Outdoor Hub muddy faces link in there as well. Katrina, do you want to come in and, and mention that?
Yeah, just to say, I mean, it, it's got two aspects. One, obviously is a sort of shop website. Actually, if you go into the Outdoor Hub. There's particularly a lot of resources to support practitioners with things like, um, how to light fires safely. Um, uh, woodworking and sort of safety around that. And there's free activities, there's a new, um, online magazine, which I think has just got a first issue out and it's called Outdoor Practitioner. It's absolutely full of really helpful resources. Um, so definitely worth having a, a look at.
Thanks Katrina. Any other resources Andy wants to just e-mark for us? I know we talked about stargazers and that link was put in for us as well, so. Um, any other resources Andy's come across that they want to share? We do have plenty of time. We're almost through our slides. iPad of you through, used through transition. Yep. To document with the children thoughts and emotions, ideas of the journey to school, creating books. Yeah, uh, do you know, the, the session we went to with Eva last week, the, the sort of things. That, um, she's, that's on the link that we've actually put on the PowerPoint. About the different ways to tell stories and the backgrounds and the characters you can add to it. You know, which are so, so, so useful, um, you know, especially when the children are, are perhaps not able to draw very much. But could actually use characters to tell the story themselves. Um, absolutely fabulous, um, app, apps out there that you can use. Anybody else? I did notice, um, the National Museum, they were running a lot of things online as well. I, I wondered if anybody had used any of the, the, the museum. Oh, there we are. Then it's back up Rebecca. Has Andy used the National Museum at all? I, I don't know whether it's maybe been more geared to primary than early years. Um, I just wondered if anybody had been using it. Or any forestry links, local to you park links that have been useful. I think because we've been through this pandemic, we've not been as out in parks and things as we much, as we maybe would have been before.
Lynne, just as we're talking here, I'm going to try and find the link for the, um, sort of find your local green space because there's a really. Filter on that map that we can just even kind of filter within five minutes, five minutes of, of your location. And that could be, you know, your nursery, your school location, it could be your home location. So, um, I'll have a wee look for that and, and just pop that in so that people.
Yeah, as we mentioned while Mary's doing that, um, as I say, we, we did a webinar last week and it was specifically around early years and outdoor learning. But there is a series of webinars that, um, Mary and one of my other colleagues, Mark and I were, were involved in. Surrounding all sorts of outdoor learning and what the really good thing about the webinars, I thought. Was we had lots of people coming in from outside to tell us what they offered, what they did, how they linked with schools. How they linked with other sectors. Um, and those are all available on the Education Scotland, um, YouTube site. So by all means, oh, there's Lorraine put in Nature Scott. The green spaces, is that the link we were looking for, Lorraine? Yeah. The green, find a green space near you.
Yep, that should be it, yep.
Super, thank you, Lorraine. So there, that link's there, especially if you're in a very built up area, that might be quite useful for you to use that link. Paul's saying he's done some CPD through West Fife. Oh yeah, oh yeah, absolutely. I've heard of them. My uncle many years ago used to, um, work with them. Um, Claire managed to secure an allotment, which is great. Yes, we had an allotment at our school, it was great. The only problem was everything came to harvest during the summer holidays and I was the closest person to the allotment and I used to have to go there. Um, I think they've managed to manage it a little bit better, the harvest time is now when they come back to school. But allotments are fabulous, especially if you live in a built up area. So those are all super ideas. Anybody stay near a beach? Anybody do anything near a beach? That's what I would want to do. I would want to be near a beach. I want to be near a beach even now, without children. Okay. Well, we'll move on. If Andy's got any ideas, by all means, oh, we do block visits of visiting to the beach. Fabulous. Rebecca, whereabouts are you? Could you tell us where you are? And we pause. Burnt Island in Fife, my very favourite, my very, very favourite Fife, the Fife coast is my favourite coast. I am extremely jealous Rebecca, extremely jealous. Fabulous. I mean, that to me would just be paradise to be exploring on a beach, um, outdoors with my friends. As an, an early years person, that would just be marvellous. Um, I'm not going to read through this slide. I put it in there because I came across this. And ten things you need to know about STEM and early years. And I thought, I'm going to put that in there, not going to read it. Um, it is there for you when you receive the PowerPoint, but I just thought there's a lot of really nice things in it. Things that, that we know about, you know, that we already know, but just to remind ourselves how good it is. Um, for STEM to be part of early year development. Heather, you're saying you had a fire and the children make their own toast. See, yeah, I love that. I just love that. So, um, we did mention the early years digital sessions and they are coming to an end as well. Um, there was one last week and again, not, not great attendance at it, but I think it's just, um, the way things are because people are so tired. But there is one tomorrow night, which I will be at and it's about confidence, creativity and curiosity in early level computing science and introduction. And Eva is an early years person and she, um, is excellent at running these webinars. Um, very, very hands on, takes you through everything. Um, so by all means, um, Lorraine's already put the signup details in the chat. Please do sign up for any of these and as I say, you'll get the links for the other ones as well. And Mrs McCory's saying she goes to her Drossen Beach. I'm, I'm just so jealous of these beach visits. I would just love to do that. So yeah, so the Did You Learn ones are going to run for a little bit longer. They're on at seven PM because she was told by early years practitioners that that's when they wanted it. Um, so I don't, I don't know, maybe you do want it at that time. I'm thinking at this time in June, you maybe have second thoughts about doing something further. So I think Mary's actually lost connection or dropped off the call at the moment. So I'm just going to open this up and I am going to pause hugely at this point because we do have plenty of time. We're nearly at the end of our session. And just say, we did talk about doing, we've done our five sessions. And we did talk about doing a couple of sessions. Here she's back now, she's got back. Um, a couple of sessions after the summer. We're going to move on to primary after the summer as well. But we did feel having run our five sessions for early years, there may be things that we have not covered that you might want to cover in the next session. And we thought we would probably do that almost as soon as we came back after the summer. So what we would like to ask you now is if you would like to share any suggestions you have. Of, um, things that we could run. Now, we've already got the ThingLink one and we're, we're more than happy to do that and. We can incorporate it into less, um, into a session. And it wouldn't take the whole session. So by all means, if you have any ideas, if there's anything you specifically would really want us to cover. For early years after the summer, now's your chance to tell us. As I say, you can either type it in the chat. But we're also happy for people just to pop in, put their camera on and pop in and tell us. Um, things that they're interested in, that they would like us to, to do after the summer. Because that's what we want to do. We want to do things for you, things that are useful for you. Yep, absolutely, Mrs McCory. And I've actually, on these slides, in two slides time, I've actually put a link to all the previous sessions. And when Mary sends out this session and the PowerPoint to you, she'll also send out a link to this session so you can, you can watch through. At your leisure as well. Uh, that's dedication that you're going to watch them over the summer. So any other suggestions, anything else that you think might be useful? Katrina, by all means, you can jump into this as well. You might have, you've been to all our sessions. If you think there's something more. We could cover related to STEM that might be useful, by all means, give us a suggestion.
There's always more, isn't there?
There's always more. There's always more. I, I, I keep joking that we're going to get Katrina to do a session in designing your office background. Because she's got the most office background. I think I've lost Mary again. She's frozen again. So I think I've lost her. So any, any suggestions at all? Don't feel you, um, oh, you've only been to the last two. I'm not. Sure what has previously been covered. Do you know what? I'm going to just flick to this. Um, could you flick two slides on please, Lorraine? Just to the one that gives it, that one there, yeah. So the very first session was very much about resources. The second session was about creating a STEM network. And it did have a very strong grants focus because that's when the grants were out to be done. The third session was about the Stem Nation Awards, um, that we run. And we have just completed the pilot of those and we're hoping to launch the Stem Nation Awards. We're just waiting on the go ahead for that. Session four was on gender stereotypes and unconscious bias. So, um, that's, that's what we covered in all of those. So really, the world's our oyster. We're happy to cover anything that you might want to come up with. Heather, is there, is there anything Heather that you've thought of yourself that you, you would want to know a little bit more about? This is the tumbleweed moment while I'm waiting for.
Just going to talk. Can I just talk rather than talk?
Please do.
Um, so our, the children are really into, um, like, there's, there's so much play, but, um. I wondered about like ideas for like maybe telescopes or some kind of kaleidoscopes or. It would be really nice to have a session where you could maybe see how we could make something. I know that sounds really silly, but.
No, 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 that's okay. Yeah, I understand what you. So kind of more like, almost like a kind of technology side of things?
Yeah, because, yeah, because Starcatchers are really good. They show us, as practitioners, how to. Get creative and give us confidence in how to deliver that. And I, I think this would be a really nice way to. Give us confidence in how to maybe deliver a bit of the engineering side of it, yeah.
Yep, good. Um, what about, uh, just on that same theme that Heather's suggesting, what about some practical science as well? Would you be interested in, in doing something like that as well? A practical technology digital session, yeah. I'm quite happy to do, to do a couple of practical sessions. Um, I don't know if there's, um, Mary missed, you keep coming and going to us. Um, Heather came on and she said that she would quite like to have a practical session around, um, maybe building stuff, you know, like a, a telescope or whatever. And yeah, we could definitely do something like that. And Kirsten's also agreed, practical technology, a digital session. So I'm sure, yeah, we can definitely, we can share some of the stuff that, that the digital team have done. Um, we can definitely do that in more detail. And as I say, I'm offering if anybody wanted some practical science, I'd be quite happy to do some practical science as well. So by all means, if you have any other suggestions, just pop them in the chat. Um, we're literally just going to tie things up now because I did promise you we'd be finished for, for six o'clock sharp. So again, I'm not going to read through these. This was from our very first session and it's STEM resources. And it's just a whole list of resources that you can access a whole lot of stuff with. We've got the. Um, direct link to the University of the West of Scotland, um, National CLPL. We've got our STEM online resource. We've got the links to the WCLits, which cover STEM, science. Learning for sustainability, you name it, it's in there and lots of early level stuff in there as well. Got a link to our STEM blog, which goes out every fortnight. Um, we've also got the link to the National Improvement Hub, which there's always. Kind of more, um, resort, there's a summary of our resources, but there's a lot of, um, uh, documentation on there as well. Mention of our recorded webinars of the outdoor learning on the S YouTube channel. We've also got a link there to the Scottish Childminding Association, um, on science to engineering and technology and maths. And our Glow Sciences PLC, which I keep reiterating is, um, there and there is, there is a. Big section on the early years. I know that because I collated it. So there is a big section on there in the early years that you just have to go in and play around with. And you'll come across early years, lots of resources, shared resources from other places. Katrina's also put in the Being Me Through Block Play weekly link in the chat as well. Um, she's saying four sessions on block play to support practitioners in professional learning. So you might want to take part in that as well. Thank you, Katrina. That's super. And as I say, the slide you've already seen is just that link to all the webinars that we've already done. And when Ma- Mary sends out the, um, the PowerPoint to you, she'll also send out. The link to this one that we'll, we've recorded today as well. So you'll get all that as well. Um, which really just brings me to the very end. Um, Mary and I's contact details are there, our email addresses. Um, we're happy to be contacted at any point about anything to do with STEM in early years at all. Our general STEM Education Scotland box is there. Um, so you can also, um, email it. And our Twitter handles, there's our stemedscotland. Um, and there's both Mary and myself and the IGBE one there. Um, it's worth, if you are on Twitter, it is worth following us. I don't mean that because I want thousands of followers, although I do. Um, it's worth following us because we do post things up. We do post any courses that we know are happening. Any links that we know about, especially the stemedScotland one, we tend to share a lot of resources on there. There's a lot of information that's what's going on nationally on that one. Um, but also, as I say, if we know of anything happening, I tend to share it, um, on mine as well. And I know Mary does too. So if you're on Twitter, by all means, follow us, um, make that connection. That would be super. And you can connect to us through there. And really all that's left to do is the evaluation. And again, I will challenge you and say, try and do it within forty five seconds. The link's in the chat and the QR code's on the screen, should you want to do that. And really that's it. So if anybody wants to come on and ask any questions, by all means, unmute yourself, put your camera on. And come and ask us anything you want or suggest anything you want, having been through this session. Thank you very much. Mary, anything you want to add?
No, thanks Lynne, just for, um, thanks for, as I dropped my internet and Scott's dropped several times there, um, really thanks for, for picking that up and stepping in this. It's, it's great, lovely to see kind of folks popping comments into the chat, um.
Dana, I'm so impressed you're listening at the gym. I am so impressed. I couldn't do those two things at the same time, so I am impressed.
Yeah, love it, love it. So we, some of the kind of links and, and obviously that have been additionally posted into the chat, we will send them out to you in the email, they'll come out. And so don't fear not about having to kind of copy them, um, from the chat pane, we'll send them. And everything else. Um, is on the, the kind of presentation, you'll get that PDF. So really huge thank you from us, um, to you for joining us, uh, this evening.
That's the last one for the summer Heather, you're absolutely right. Have a great summer. Hopefully we might get some good weather. Um, have a super summer and we will, um, we are going to have a look at all the, the registrations. And, and see if we can start pull together some networks as well. So we will be in touch probably with you at some point. Um, but we will leave you over the summer. Don't worry. We'll wait till after the summer before we send out any emails so that nobody's tempted. To, to work over the summer. That's the last thing we, we'd like. Great, Mrs McCory, yeah, by all means, have a look at this. Thank you Cheryl, that's good. That's good to know. We're just hoping to hit the mark and as I say, we're, we're completely open to suggestions of things to take forward and we've taken on that one. About the practical sessions and we'll see what we can do about that. We'll look into that and see what we could do. You're very welcome, Maryann.
And a huge thank you to Lorraine and to Katrina for joining us, for, uh, adding to the sessions, for sharing. We couldn't have done it without you. So a huge, huge thanks. It's a team effort, so. The treadmill is calling, nice.
What we thought as well is, um, if you are in a region and you feel that your region. As well is if you are in a region and you feel that your region could also benefit from maybe a kind of summary of our sessions, by all means, get in touch as well. We, we do realise that not everybody has been able to, to access these and, and obviously, you know, just with the way things have been. So by all means, if you feel your own region or your own local authority would benefit from an individual input from us, a summary session. We are in the process of formatting that. So hopefully we would be quite happy to come along and deliver as well to a number of practitioners in your local authority.
Yeah, and just to kind of echo that, if, if we've kind of done a whistle stop tour of things for you and you want to kind of explore something in more depth, we're happy to do that with you too. So yeah, it is a jam packed session, Shauna. So you were aware of that, but hopefully there's lots that you can take forward and, and try out and share with us. And we'd love to hear your story.
Absolutely. Three minutes to spare. I did promise you six o'clock.
Well done, well done. Absolutely, Wendy.
Yes.
Definitely. Yeah, you'll get the, you'll get the kind of slide, the PDF and it'll have all of the, all of the links. And, and again, from that local authority, kind of your website, your networks, then that can influence what we do too. So really happy to work in partnership to shape that in the next sessions. Lyn, you know, we've said that already.
Great summer to you. Have a great summer to you too. That's really it. It's, it's up to you. If you want to just call off now, we completely accept that, that you may be wanting to go have your dinner or watch the end of the football if it hasn't finished already. What is the score, Paul? Have you been watching it out the side of your eye? Or Lorraine? Lorraine, have you had on?
I can't possibly comment.
Right, okay. Is it finished? Is the match finished?
Um.
Oh, one, Wales, there's Julie. You've already, you've already told us. So that's great. So Wales, Wales won. That's fabulous. Is it finished? Match finished?
Aye, I think we're done.
Good, good, good. No, you've been very. Do you so believe you not?
And happy, happy reading of those kind of the books that you were mentioning earlier. Folks, if, if anybody wants to come in and to ask a question, we'll happily do that. And if not, I'll, I'll start to kind of end the meeting for, for colleagues on the call. So now's your time. If you want to come in and ask, and sometimes people.
We're throwing you out. You're in no choice. We're telling you the day is over.
So just checking that that's not the case.